opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, is there anyone that would like to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? All right, seen none. We'll move on to presentation. We had a young man. One of you may have known that had served multiple generations with the city. Starting on the planning. This isn't about that. The sort of the city council from. Center twenty six. March twenty seven. February of twenty two. I'm the rain counselor. I I zone the.
Your desk. Every restaurant.
Ichabod.
And that's the reason the five of them are here.
Yes. That's the reason for the next item on the agenda. Uh, council position interview. So what we're going to do is it's like we're just going to go down through alphabetical order of last name. What we're going to ask is for the applicants that are not currently in their interview to run to council chambers so that we can interview the person and once you're done, you can sit and view that way. There's fair set of questions to everyone. So that would be greatly appreciated. And uh, our first uh, interview will be Monica Allers, which once I said alphabetical, you probably knew. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself real quick, that'd be fine.
Um, well, I've lived in Oregon my whole life. Moved to Scappus about seven years ago from Portland. My husband works here, so that was kind of the purpose of the move. And we now have three children that have all been born in lived in Scappus and one of them is at Grant Watts and their two are just turned five and twenty months.
Thank you. So why are you interested in becoming a member of the Scappus City Council?
Well, um, I feel like I'm invested in the community. Now that you have children going to school and really enjoy our community and just hope to see it become great place and I can only imagine that it's going to be growing that all the time. So I have an architectural background, architectural designer, and I work part-time at convergence architecture. So the, you know, the fifty year plan, I'm really interested in that. That's just right up in architect's alley, so. Um, that, that, that's part of it. And I just want to see this city become a great. Yes. Come and grow in a wise manner, sustainable and environmentally, thinking of those things for growth.
Very much.
Thank you for your interest. I appreciate your time here being with us tonight.
Thank you.
What unique skills and experiences could you bring to the city council position? I know you talked about your architectural background, but if you want to build out on that or provide any other insights.
Sure, yeah, I, I've been in the architectural field for it's two thousand and six, I think that's about fifteen years. I worked at a large firm before and at that firm, we worked on a lot of public projects. I was on the public projects team for many years. I also was on other teams, but the most part, that's the team I was on. So I've worked with cities, auto done fire stations and a city hall and a police station. So I really enjoyed those projects. That was my favorite. Those were my favorite types of projects. At my current firm, we still have been doing, I've been doing still some public type projects with Metro. Until COVID hit, we were doing a project with them. So at the Oregon Convention Center, so I just really enjoy working on public with public entities and working on public projects. So I think that's, that's definitely where I've had my experience working with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Position of city council. Personal standpoint, I've found that meetings are the least amount of time. Relation to the meeting. Time side reading things I think over my head. I got to read it a couple of times.
Yeah.
There's a lot of preparation. Other responsibilities you have, you'll have bias on. So it's very time. Can you be able to devote the necessary time dramatically to the position? Would you balance this new role with your correct time?
Yeah, and I, that's a great question. Well, I guess I could only hope that I would be able to fulfill that. I work part-time, so it isn't full-time right now. Due to the small children that we have. My evenings, you know, I, I do make time at home mostly for my actual job and no, I volunteer position. I, I'm very organized and uh, very set on doing things well. So I, I would spend the time that I need, would be necessary. I wouldn't feel comfortable not putting the right amount of time into it. And I was on the Grabhorn Ad hoc Committee, so I do have a little bit of knowledge of how much that time that took. And yeah, I, I, it was a lot of reading and that's fine. I have, do that, no problem.
Hi Monica, um, this is a kind of a two-part question. Do you understand the council manager form of government? And what would your role as a counselor be if you were appointed?
Well, I, I gather this is volunteer, so. I guess I'm not that familiar with exactly what a counselor would do, so we definitely need to lean on others in the other counselors if I had questions. I'm very aware in general that public entities and public, you know, cities, there are rules and ways that you have to do things. And especially when we, I was working on construction projects. We had to do it a certain way and that was couldn't vary from that, so. I know that there are rules and they need to be followed and methods, so. Beyond that, I'm not, I would need to learn.
Thank you.
What a counselor does.
Understood, thank you. Hi Monica, thank you for your application.
Thank you.
What do you think the city is doing well?
I think the fifty year plan is very good step. Having a plan of the growth that will be happening is completely necessary. Uh, I don't know how you would develop a city and know where to put certain things and where, where to make business areas, and I'm sure there's already zoning, but you know, those can change sometimes and those are asked to be changed sometimes, so. Having that planned out and making it a, thinking about sustainability and, you know, the wetlands that are around here. The environment that we have in, in surrounding Scappus area, that's key to laying out the city. So that, I mean, fifty years, hundred years, that's, that's what definitely needs to be thought of, so.
Thank you.
Monica. What do you think the city can do better? Don't hold back.
Uh, well, I, you know, I thought that could be a question, but, and I couldn't really come up with a, an answer, but I guess maybe just somehow getting the word out of anything that's happening, I don't know, just information, making that as readily available as possible. I get, I am on Facebook, so I see things at Avenue mostly. I don't know if that would be the preferred way. I do have the city app also, but I don't necessarily get notifications or anything, and I don't know if that's set up to you know, have notifications, but just more knowledge of things that are going on. Information that the city has that they want to send out to the citizens. That's what I can think of.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What do you think are the three most important issues facing the city?
Um, definitely growth of the city and locating areas, types of areas like housing, housing density, business areas. Locating those in a smart way. Is that three? I think Highway thirty is a challenge. For making the street safe, I'm always concerned about children crossing the street side to the other side when they're going to school and the train tracks, so safety and, and the speed of which cars might be going down the road. And then also just yes, I would say beautifying Highway thirty, so when people are driving through the city, they want to stop and go to the businesses in the cities. It seems more like a place to drive through right now than a place to stop. So somehow making that road feel like more inviting and somewhere to, oh, I want to turn off here because this is really cool.
Cement freeway they put in the eighties.
Yeah. Especially by Fred Meyer area where it's forty-five miles per hour. Inviting.
Thank you for those. Just so I can recap, you spoke on growth, housing and safety of Highway thirty. Wrap those up.
Yep.
Of those three issues, what do you think the city should do to address the important, the most important of those issues?
Well, the one that I have the most, I guess, thoughts on is the Highway thirty issue. When you visit certain cities or certain cities that are older, perhaps it's more, you have more of a sense of place. So there's a certain look, there's a certain wave, the locks are laid out. The road isn't just a turning lane in the middle or have a parkway. Other ways to slow down the traffic. Getting off the blunt bike lane. The sidewalks a little scary and I see people walking down where it's forty-five miles an hour. Just keep traffic calming measures and really beautifying the buildings or adding to the buildings that are directly on the street. That's what, you know, maybe even parking right off of the street so that people know, okay, I can stop here and to this cafe or go to this little shop. I've seen shops come and go very quickly certain places, so, which is unfortunate.
Thank you for your honesty in that.
Part of this disagreement or debate amongst city council decision-making process.
Well, totally necessary, I would say. Princes of opinion are natural and important to get down to a, a decision. So it's fine to disagree. It's just the way that it, the disagreement may be approached and discussed and being open to listening to each other. That's the most important part.
All right, this is the last question. Is there anything you would like to ask us?
I think that I, for the fifty year plan, I just wanted to encourage that sustainability and sustainability goals be considered. Sometimes that's tough, but I think it's really important and for instance, the city of Portland or their city buildings, not a bunch of city buildings are going to be built here, but this is an example, they have a goal or a requirement really for their buildings to be lead gold. Or for operations and maintenance also, so that would be an existing building that is required to have sustainability in its even operations and maintenance. So even existing buildings can be used that way and, and have those kind of goals. And then just encouraging businesses that are being developed here to somehow encourage them to spend money in, you know, for sustainable building practices. Times that can be in tax credits or not sure what all those incentives are, but just thinking outside the box with that could mean.
I'm on the fifty year committee and any ideas or suggestions that you have, of course, you're welcome to come in any capacity, but you're also welcome to email me too. So I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can actually sit in the audience now.
Okay. Thank you, it's my honor to. Thank you.
Fill out your application.
Thank you.
Yes, next is Ty Bailey. Good evening, Ty, how are you?
Doing okay, how are you all doing?
Good, would you like to take a few minutes to introduce yourself?
Uh, yeah, Ty Bailey, um, I've been in Scappus for eight years now. I am on the budget committee, have been for six years-ish, a little under. And a local executive, manage a large team globally for software and working from home for a while and will continue to do for, so for the foreseeable future.
Welcome, Ty. I thank you for your application and your interest in the city. Why are you interested in becoming a member of Scappus City Council?
Fundamentally, fundamentally, I like to help. I think that is core aspect. I applied previously and lost to a fit young gentleman named Joel. But at, at the core, I have a lot of experience both in large groups, budgets, planning, contract. Weird regulatory structuring as well as growth. I historic, uh, historically, I came from a community much like Scappus and then moved to the big city for schools, grad school. Uh, and when the opportunity came, we moved back west and found a community much like we had growing up so we could raise our daughter.
Thank you.
What unique skills and experiences could you bring to the city council position?
As I mentioned, a, a lot of experience in scaling structures and interdisciplinary items. My business background has been one that goes across a number of different verticals, both government, civic, retail, financial, um, some military. So I've seen all of the different contract and key stakeholder points as well as the different prioritizations that people will bring to conversations. I like to believe that I hold a pragmatic view to conflict resolution. You know, finding ways that are the best possible outcome, given limited capability and the inability to hit everything. How do we take one step forward? Which was the other aspect of my application, chatting with everyone. I don't think I need to worry about it as much, but we've had a heightened political situation lately and I wanted to make sure just in case, uh, I could help out to keep things home, local focused. I don't like Twitter. Uh, and really trying to keep the, the community way it has been. The reason you haven't seen me since last time I was here, other than for committee meetings and so on, is I think you all are doing a good job. So I want to keep that going.
Thank you for being here.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much, Ty. The position, the position, as enunciation, city council is a time-consuming position. Examples are other meetings that we have to go to other than our Monday night meetings, preparation for meetings, staying up to date on issues that arise. But it does add up on time. Would you be able to devote the necessary time to adequately fill the position? How would you balance this new role with your current time commitments?
Yeah, uh, one of the benefits of the change in my work venue is that I am perpetually work from home for the foreseeable. And we will no longer have regional officeing, so I'd have no commute times, I can balance those things out. I also have a global workforce, meaning my schedule is literally twenty-four hours. Some days I have five AM meetings, some days I'll have nine PM meetings. I adjust accordingly, so adapting to the needs here should be fairly doable. One challenge, just to be straightforward, is I'll probably have travel on a fairly regular bit, one week a month or so. So as long as we're still doing digital, that shouldn't be a problem either, but you know, I, I have to maintain my different business points as well.
Hi, thank you for your service with the budget committee, thank you for being here tonight. Do you understand the council manager form of government? What would your role as a counselor be if you were appointed?
Generally, I actually have not gone through the full charter associated to Scappus, and I know that this can vary depending on the different municipalities and the, the chartering in place. By and large, uh, the manager actually manages and runs the city. The council is decision-making, executive authority, budgetary and guidance. Whereas the actual, you know, day-to-day structural authority is associated to the city manager to ensure smooth and continual operations. I do okay in.
All right, what do you think the city is doing well at?
I think the city is doing a pretty good job managing the pressure of growth versus maintaining the culture around. And I think that's going to be the ongoing challenge, especially with the changing of the economy. I think it's done a very good job in parks, rec, uh, expansion of opportunity at, you know, the costs that are available to it. I think the schools have been decent through, always room for improvement all the time, but compared to Oregon writ large, I think we do a good job in that, in that space. And the community presence has been really good. I think we're seeing some challenges with strain of the times. But Scappus by and large has done a real good job maintaining civic cohesion over the past few years.
Okay, if you were selected, would you be willing to change your name to avoid confusion?
My full name is Ty. Not, there's no short, no anything, two letters, full stop, I don't even have a vowel.
That wasn't really the question. Just like to mix things up a little bit. All right, that's for the real question, what do you think the city can do better?
I think the city and is working on it, but I, I think figuring out ways of getting more business opportunities that are associated to core business lines as opposed to just consumptive lines. So we have restaurants, we have a few different shops, but beyond lawyers and real estate agencies and so on, it seems like we lack a diversity in business activity. I think a lot of that has to do with zoning, I'm sure there's tons of challenges connected to that. Also attracting the private business lines, but I think for long-term will be important to maintain that unless we become much more of a bedroom community.
What do you think are the three most important issues facing the city?
The most important issues facing the city, I think balancing of growth. I'm gonna, I'm going to do the political thing and say that I have As and Bs. Managing the growth in terms of making sure the cost of living is managed while allowing for talent to come in, new, new population, because you don't want to stack the population pool. Second is managing the civic budgets in terms of park expansion, park maintenance, recreational areas to ensure that with the limited tax base as we grow, we expand appropriately. And then the third one honestly is infrastructure, which I'm sure is not a shock to anyone given the amount of focus on fifty-year plan around sidewalk repair. Water and sewer has been a common topic. I'm sure broadband expansion of elements to allow for future growth in the tech-based economy are going to become higher topics as the years progress.
So thinking about those three important issues, broad important issues. What do you think the city should do to address those issues? So you, you could give an example for how we can manage the growth and an example for how to do the parks and rec, or you could just give us what you think we should do to address the issues you see in front of us.
Yeah, I, I, I think some of the growth, you know, the candle apartments, I think are a good step. I actually think that having another apartment areas would be a good idea in a mixed extent, I don't think you want to have all of that in one zonal area, but that's spread around. Uh, that'll be helpful, I think. Using the fiber optics we have will be useful, the whole town is riddled with them, so it would be good to start actually lighting up fiber to allow for diversity of business lines, uh, because right now we're locking ourselves out of tech business by and large. That would also accommodate a lot of easy wifi expansion to outer, uh, outer civic areas either through LTE or broadband-based wireless. Then beyond that, further investment, I know we're going to try to use our funds on the infrastructure elements. Figuring out creative ways to really focus on cities, sidewalks, infrastructure elements, aging areas will be important. Uh, I don't know what we'll do with areas like where old canning location was. It seems like there's a lot of business opportunity there that's currently not being realized and would be good to focus on.
All right, how do you feel that disagreement and or debate among city council fits in the decision-making process?
I think debates impossible to avoid. If you actually have no debate, you don't really need a council. By and large, I come from a space that has a lot of conflict. We move fast, things break. You can argue it's too fast often. But what I do a lot of training onto my staff, to mentees is on identification of conflict situations, core value sets, and then figuring out when a debate, even a passionate debate, is based on shared values versus for the sake of argument, is if you can separate out the subjective personal, the objective communal, it means that you could both agree on a core point to go after, even if the distance or the effect is not in line with either of your core wants, you can at least agree on a direction. And that's really a, a key value, I think, in debate or councils or in any kind of diverse committee situation.
Ty, last but not least, do you have questions for us?
Uh, I think I've chatted with everybody a, a few times, I think I've gotten to know the, the city and the council over the years. I, I'd love just from any of your perspectives, you know, over the past couple of years, coming out of the weird uh, state we've been in. You know, what, what do you think the biggest thing that you're all seeing is going to be coming, uh, coming down? Not everyone has to answer or anyone really, but that, that is my big question.
Coming out of the pandemic or coming.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Oh, I mean, the clear, I think the biggest it's going to be facing city governments and their general funds in several years is have inflation that's eight and a half, nine, ten percent. Your your general fund property tax dollars are capped at three percent increase each year. your general fund property tax dollars are capped at 3% increase each year. This is a situation very unlike housing crisis that happened 10, 12, 13 years ago where property taxes were still being paid, no matter what, we still collected our revenue. Now, as costs increases are outstripping that increase, I think that's going to be the biggest challenge. Not only the city of Scapuce going into the future, but every city that depended on this Oregon style.
It's a lot of sense.
You all want to go or?
I say if you want to, you don't need to. Like I was, I was happy with that one. That seems like a big.
Thank you, Ty.
Thank you, Ty.
Thank you. Cheers, folks.
Are you able to, now that we're completed the interrogation?
Monica had fun doing the same for you. I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
That's Kimberly Holmes. Are you on?
Then you.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Let's give you a, start off with giving you a moment to introduce yourself.
I'm Holmes Cantrowitz. I've been a resident of Scapuce for about four years. Have been involved in the Parks and Rec Committee, was served as part of the citizen group for the City Manager Hunt. Helped spearhead the Grabhorn Park Community Discussion when that was up last summer. And I'm currently on the 50 Year Planning Committee as well, so.
Hi, Kim. Welcome. Glad you're interested in this position. Why are you interested in becoming a member of the City Council?
Yeah, so I thought about that. Thank you for extending the deadline, by the way, because it is something that you have to turn on, right? This is not a decision you just make a snap decision about it, because it is a responsibility. But as I thought about it, I've loved all of those engagement opportunities. It's probably been one of the most meaningful aspects of being part of this community is being able to participate with, you know, I think the city does a really good job making volunteering accessible for people. And it's, it's fulfilling, it's gratifying. So that's one of the main reasons that I did go ahead and apply. And then I would also say too, you know, I think Scapuce is, we are on the cusp of change with OMC coming and industry and manufacturing. And if kind of my professional skill set and experience could be a benefit to the community at that time, you know, I certainly want to be able to offer that as well.
Hi, Kim. What unique skills and experience could you bring to the city council position?
Yeah, so just, you know, I guess diving further into what I just mentioned about my professional skills and experience. So working, I was a executive at one of the largest trade associations for the plastics industries. That's the third largest manufacturing industry in the US. And we did a lot of lobbying for the key issues for that industry in the federal and state level. I now have my own consulting company and I do a lot of advocacy work for my clients. Some of that's soft advocacy, some of it's hard advocacy. But I really do, I think, have a good experience for different levels of engagement across government. But then also have done a lot of work bringing stakeholders together to drive new initiatives and innovation and create change, bringing all of the stakeholders and key parties together.
Thank you. The position of city council is a time consuming position. We have meetings, obviously, a couple of times a month. Sometimes we have other meetings, but more of the work ends up being in kind of just involving yourself and, you know, reading through the material and getting up to date as well as being a liaison for some of the other meetings that are going on in the city. So would you be able to devote the necessary time to adequately fill the position? And how would you balance this role, this new role with your current time commitments?
That was certainly part of everything I was considering as well during the application process. Having my own consulting company, I kind of am able to set my own schedule, so it does afford me some flexibility. As you may have seen from previous comment I've provided, sometimes that has to be done from a hotel room. But I mean, obviously, if I was, you know, working with you guys in the formal capacity of a counselor, I would be able to structure my travel schedule to avoid those conflicts in particular. You know, I, I think some of the other activities, like working on the Earth Day activity in previous years, kind of all of the planning that goes into that, that also takes a lot of work, right? And so I do think there are a number of citizens that have been just really dedicated to giving their time in whatever capacity. So I do recognize all of the work that you guys put into this. And, you know, I, I hope I would be able to bring equal quality and commitment.
Thank you.
Hi. Do you understand the council manager form of government? And what would your role as a counselor be if you were appointed?
I, I, I can always learn, but I think I've got a grasp in seeing you guys function. Really, you guys are serving, I would say, in two capacities, an advisory capacity to the mayor, but then also representative of the community, right? I think all of us have unique lives within the community and positions and connections. And it's our responsibility to be representatives of our communities as well.
Thank you.
What do you think the city is doing well?
So hands down, I think the way that you guys have really begun to engage the community is amazing. So to my understanding, that really started with the G-PAC process, which felt like a very, there was a lot of tension and friction around that. And it, it was really impactful to experience it firsthand, to see how engaging people helps diffuse things sometimes. And you can bring all of the, you know, the different voices and opinions and experiences to the table. And I think truly come up with something that makes the most sense and will have the best benefit and outcome. And leave people and like exiting the process feeling good, right? Having a good positive experience with their local government. And I got to hold the first community conversation for the 50 year planning. And it was the same thing. People were so happy that the city wanted to know their opinion and they were ready. They were ready to talk about what they loved about Scapuce, what they want to see changed in the future or considered as we grow. So that type of thing just really fires up the community, I think, in a good and unifying way. And so I think you guys are doing really good. And it, Council Grace, and I really appreciated your recommendation to take the candle to a survey, the candle color. And it's like, that's, that's, I think, the type of moves that as a city council can be made to really just improve the community in general.
So I would follow up with that. How do you think the city could improve?
So how can the city improve?
Lay it on us.
Well, I would say, yeah, just with the 50 year planning process in general, there's going to be a lot to consider, right? A lot, housing needs, you know, how we grow business, how we do all of that in conjunction with other agencies like the school district and that around. And so I think we're faced with something we've never been faced with. But I would say continuing to build on this model of bridging with different stakeholders within the community. That's, that's where I would like to see everyone head. So I don't know if I exactly answered your question, but.
Thank you. Kim, what do you think are the three most important issues facing the city?
So I would say OMC and how we, how we support that successfully. Because I, I really, you know, it, there's kind of like this fever around OMC. And I think it's, it's absolutely warranted because I see a big role for reshoring of manufacturing here to the US. And if we can do this right and figure out as a community, how to support that institution and then building up an economy around it, that could serve as a model. And that's really, really exciting. So I would say that's, that's one thing that would be a top priority. Two, I would love to see some of the parks and the land and the assets that we have get developed. Start taking the steps to develop those. So I love Vista Park. I might be like one of five people who uses Vista Park. It's not that I want to see it more crowded. It's a lovely peaceful place. But that, as an example, is, you know, another great asset of the community that we maybe just not have, you know, funneled the resources and attention to. So if we can continue to keep those things in focus, the thing, the assets that we have and the things that can make us good while at the same time, you know, preparing and embracing for the change that's coming in the future. I think that's the balancing act that we really need to do. And then third, you know, this came to light during the, the whole Grabhorn process was building this bridge with the school district. I mean, these are, these are public assets, right? We have public assets. And how do we leverage those public assets together in a way that benefits particularly the kids? And so I guess all throughout number four, being on Parks and Rec, we are real good on the parks. We're a little bit short on the rec. And that, not just rec for kids, but rec for everyone in the community. So what I would also like to see, and this is a discussion for Parks and Rec, is how do we begin to leverage the assets we do have? In the absence of a community center, you know, where do we create these spaces and places for people to come together and share their skills, share their knowledge, make new friends, just feel a part of the community? And I think that can be done by looking at, you know, what, what spaces are available in churches? What spaces might there be available in our businesses to host like a knitting class or the library or the senior center? And really begin to map out the resources that we do have so we can start building these opportunities for connection. And I think that comes too, when you're looking at economic development. How do we create, how do we bring in the businesses that offer those opportunities? And I will say in the, the community conversation, I cannot tell you, for the people who didn't live in Scapuce, I kind of first amended two different groups. So the people who come to work play volunteer in Scapuce. I said, what brings you into town most often? And they're like cathedral coffee. So having places that create those types of spaces that bring people together would be, I think, also something really important to look at, including as we go into the future.
Thank you for number four. It's delightful. What do you think the city should do to address the important issues?
So building bridges, which it seems you guys are, you're building bridges with the community to get input on planning. When it comes to OMC, I think, you know, and building up the industry that will follow, there will be bridges that need to be built, you know, beyond the community with the county and probably state agencies. So I think continuing to look at, yeah, how we make those connections through these points of growth and decision points so that we have the right stakeholders at the table. And, you know, I think, as Peter mentioned, you guys like to work off of lots of knowledge, right? And that's how you get the knowledge to make sure that, you know, those who need to be included in the process are included. So everyone can move forward with a better decision.
How do you feel that disagreement and or debate among city council fits in the decision, in the decision making process?
So, yeah, that's a great question. Because in some of the stakeholder collaboration work that I've done, so I, I chaired a group of other trade associations. It was the national, it was NAPRA, the National Recycling Plastic Alliance. I forget what the acronym was, but it was like our association, the American Chemistry Council, ISRI, Institute of Scrap Recycling Industries. So, you know, they all have different interests. Some of them are competing, some are the same. And so what we had to do is we had to identify, okay, where are our common goals? And figure out how we can support each other in those goals while also letting some of these other, you know, independent or sometimes competing priorities still exist. And it's fine, right? We don't have to agree on everything 100% of the time. We likely agree on 80% of the things. So focusing on that, allowing there to be the space for debate and, you know, sometimes contention. But I think the key is making sure that, again, it's bridges, you're not burning bridges. So you may not have consensus or agreement on one day, but you make sure you have a relationship so you can have a conversation the next day.
And is there anything that you would like to ask us? Final question?
Oh. Not that comes to mind, no. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome to join the audience.
Hello.
Welcome, Marissa, how are you?
Thank you, I'm well, thank you.
Like a moment to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Marissa Jacobs. I'm new to Scapuce. I've been living in town for just over a year and a half. Been in Oregon for, coming up on 10 years. I'm up from Southern California. I am an HR professional, been working in the professional field for over 20 years.
Why are you interested in becoming a member of the Scapuce City Council?
I have always had an interest and desire in politics since I was a young child. And it wasn't until the last, about five or six years ago, where I started to actually actively get involved. I previously lived in North Portland and was a part of our neighborhood association. I chaired St. John's Neighborhood Association and started doing work with the local Portland City Council and found that to be challenging and frustrating at the same time. And so I knew I was definitely on the right path of something that I was enjoying. And so it's a, it's a desire of mine. I like to get involved and help to make the place I'm living better for all.
Marissa, could you provide what unique skills or experiences you would bring to the city council?
Absolutely. I think one of the things that I'm really good at is being able to quickly synthesize what the big picture is as well as be able to dive down into the details. And I've found through my experience and working with others that that's a skill that's helpful to bring groups together so that we can keep on target and understanding what is it that we're being asked to do? I also ask very, I consider myself to be curious and ask lots of questions, which I find helps spur a lot of debate and conversation, which I think is extremely helpful and healthy when you can discuss various points of view. So you can arrive at a collectively, you can arrive at a collective decision that's for the betterment of the team.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Marissa, position of city council is timed. Probably these meetings. Great places, very many meetings and other meetings that we have. So as I'm sure you know, it's, it's very tight, can be very time consuming. Do you be able to devote the necessary time to adequately fill the position? How would you balance this role with your current time?
Absolutely. So I have been tracking over the last year and a half with you, trying my best to always be in person when possible. But I am familiar that it requires a lot of work. It's a lot of reading, a lot of research, a lot of phone calls and getting to really understand what the issues are. understand what the issues are. And it comes down to organization, time management, two skills that I think I do possess quite well. And it's something that's of importance. And when something is of importance to me, I prioritize it. So yes, I do feel comfortable and confident to make the time commitment.
Do you understand the council manager form of government? And what would your role as a counselor be if you were appointed?
Yes, I have a, I think I have a good understanding of the management structure. I'm sorry, can you repeat the last portion of your question, Counselor Miller?
Sure. What would your role as a counselor be if you were appointed?
Thank you. So my role is to show up and be a representative for the community in looking and understanding what the issues are at hand that city staff brings forward. And I would see my relationship with the city staff as a partnership in trying to understand what the issues are and trying to get questions answered so that I can bring a thoughtful perspective to the group discussion during session time.
Thank you. All right, so what do you think the city is doing well?
I think that the city is, from my perspective, being open and transparency. I've noticed that that has definitely increased within a short amount of time. I really like the fact that, being on the, as a citizen, being involved and being welcome to come in and voice my opinions and my concerns and seeing that they are taken to heart and that things are actually being actioned upon based off recommendations. So I think those are things that I'm seeing that the council is doing really well at and making this an inclusive process for all of us.
You know, we love it when people, there could be years where we just didn't have any government. If you're in a vacuum, then you're like, are we doing the right thing? So it's appreciated.
Well, thank you. Well, and, you know, I firmly believe that as a citizen, it is part of our obligation to participate in our government and something that I didn't do for a very long time and now I feel like I'm trying to make up for lost time a little bit.
Only we could get like the 90 viewers from the school board meetings to, you know, tickets at the door.
Those in cycles.
Totally. Yeah, right?
When I first got on council, there was quite the viewing of the city council meetings on that council.
Let's not repeat that.
Yeah.
So contrary to the last question, what do you think the city can do better? Hold back.
Don't hold back. Well, I think where I'm sitting, I think there's also, to be fair, there's a lot that I don't know. One, I am new and still ramping up and trying to understand sort of the history behind a lot of things and decisions that have been made. One thing that I think would be beneficial for council, I think, is to get a little bit more diversity on the council, quite honestly. I think diversity is helpful in bringing different perspectives and fostering debate, healthy debate and coming to a decision for what's best for the community.
You got tough skin.
I know you do. I will say one thing, sitting on this side, that I think is really important, that I would like to see council take a more definitive step towards, is really helping to identify what Scappus is and who we are as a community. Because we have a limited land here, there's a lot of development opportunity. And I think if, with your help and guidance, we're able to help establish what our brand is, I think that will help make the entire development process go a lot easier because we'll have one point to work from and then everything would trickle down from there. And I think that would help make this community a great place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you think are the three most important issues facing the city?
Growth, as in every other town, I think especially on the West Coast. Development and how those two intersect with one another. How are we going to develop and manage the growth that's coming in? And three, I think, natural resources, specifically or in particular, I think, water. And I think we have to think about those things as we look at the growth and development. We only have so much land, there's only so much we can do. So I think we have to be very mindful in looking at the long-term strategy for this town and how our natural resources will be impacted by growth and development.
Trying to follow up with that, Marissa. What do you think the city should do to address those important issues?
I think you're taking a very good step by having the 50-year committee that will be looking at building codes and looking at what projections are. So I think getting the, a lot of that data through that committee will be helpful in making those decisions. So I think you're on the right track. I think another thing to keep just mindful when we talk about growth, development and natural resources is, you know, the cost impact. How do we ensure that we continue to grow, develop, maintain our natural resources, but maintain it at a price point that we're not going to push people out? So I think your job is large and big and stressful, but I think that you can do it. And I think by having the right members on the team and working with the committees, I think it can be done, can be done in a very thoughtful manner. Thank you.
Marissa, how do you, how do disagreement and debate among city council fit the decision-making process?
It's essential. We have to be able, in any type of setting, you have to be able to have healthy debate. It would be concerning if all council members came with the same viewpoint. It would be, that's not how we should be operating. It's okay to disagree, but we can disagree in a thoughtful, respectful and kind manner. And that's what healthy debate is. And I think unfortunately, that has been lost over the last several years, just as a society holistically. But I think it is starting to slowly come back. But we all have to be open. We can't all think the same and nor should we. And it's okay to be different. That's how you get some really great outcomes, decisions. Thank you.
Marissa, this is the last question. Is there anything you would like to ask us?
What are you looking for in a council member?
I think me, I'm looking for someone that I think will fit on the team, but also has different skill sets and is able to come in and, I mean, kind of give what you said, you know, a little bit of diversity, a little bit of different processes and somebody that will come in and be part of our team. I mentioned earlier that when I came in, it was really fractious. I actually ran for election because one council member called another council member and it was quoted in Spotlight in 1998 calling him a fat pig. That's what spurred me to originally file the run. And it's because I agreed with what your sentiment was, and I still agree today, is that we can have heated debates about something, but you know what, at the end of the day, all looking to do the bright thing, all go and have a beer. I do owe Joel a beer.
He's still sitting there, he's waiting.
You know, I mean, so that you can come together and do that. And that was the, really, when I first got on the council, that was a plan. That was 20 years ago and it was task number one is listening. That's how you got things done. That's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
I'll add to that. I think for me, choosing the next council member has a lot to do with values and service before self becomes, pops in my head, you know, truly caring about our community. Those, that's really what matters. If you truly care about our community and you let all of your decisions and everything comes out of your mouth, if that's what leads that, then, I mean, that's how I operate anyway, is just really caring about our community. That's why I'm here. I didn't say that very well, but I think you get my point.
I do.
If I could follow that up too, you know, I think Tyler makes a good point. Also for me, you know, experience and background, having that diversity, you know, we all come from a different background in our jobs and what we've done in the past. And I always look for somebody who can add to that, who can bring some outside, you know, I'm not, I'm not a professional at everything. I have one thing that I'm really good at and I try and bring my background to it. So there's, I always try and listen to everybody else that does have a background and what their expertise is, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In our last applicant. Yeah.
He's one.
Last but not least.
Yes. Welcome, Jeanette. Would you like to take a minute to introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Jeanette Santiago. I am an active member of Scappus. I've lived here with my family since 2007. Want me elaborate or more?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Hi, Jeanette, welcome. Why are you interested in becoming a member of the Scappus City Council?
Since coming to this community in 2007, I was just saying, some, designing the group in the chamber, the really loudly room over there. It's really loud in there. But we were just talking about when I first entered Scappus, I fell in love with it. I don't know, it's a feeling that you, it was just a beautiful day, the families were out, I think there was some sport, either baseball or soccer. And driving down High School Way, I was like, wow, this is a place that I want to live and raise my kids here. Since then, I joined the budget committee, tried to be involved. So wherever, I'm an active member, wherever I'm at, whether it be work, I commit myself in getting involved in that community. So started with the budget committee and then inactive since then. Currently, I'm in the planning commission meeting and also economic development as well as the, all subcommittees that, part of that, those committees as well. So I love Scappus. So I, why I want to be in this position, because I feel that I want to give my perspective, who I am, where I come from. Most of the time that I'm in this, since 2007, most of the committees and groups that I am part of, I've been the only person of color in the room. And so I want to represent my community, I want to give a voice and, and that's why I want to be part of the council.
What skills, unique skills and experiences could you bring to the city council position?
Well, I'm an entrepreneur. I've been an entrepreneur since most of my career. Currently, I'm in government contracting. So I assist businesses in government and state and local and federal contracts. So I do deal with local agencies on a daily basis and with businesses on a daily basis. I, in my previous careers, I've actually worked for the Spotlight and I really loved that job because I got to go and visit and see all of Columbia County. Got to talk to the businesses, see what they need, and I really got to know my community, which is not something that most people have the opportunity to do, right? And so I thought that was a great advantage for me to be able to know my community inside and out, know who's here, and get to know businesses, which is the heart of any town. Thank you. Can I adjust this, this is my face?
Yes, you may. Position of city council is a time-consuming position. We're expected to be prepared for meetings, I don't see it works properly.
I have that problem sometimes, but okay.
But also, you know, other meetings that we get asked to go to, so there's a time commitment. Would you be able to devote the necessary time to adequately fill the position? How would you balance this new role with your current time commitments?
So from what I hear, that I am part of several committees currently and I was told that, you know, I would have to relinquish those since if I do take the council position. So I know that those committees have time to prepare and I don't see how, if I, if I do leave those other positions as a member of those committees, then definitely I would be able to make time. I make time because I care. I also do a lot of, I feel like I have a full-time job and then I have another full-time job that I don't get paid for, such as committees and not just here in Scappus, but also in my line of work and what I do. So weekends are for sometimes.
Jeanette, do you understand the city, are the council manager form of government? And what would your role as a counselor be if you were appointed?
You mean like the bylaws? Do I understand it? No, I haven't read those. But to be honest, I haven't. But I do know that every committee that I've been part of, we have to take that, everything to you guys, to the council, and you guys make decisions. You guys are leaders, you guys are the forefront of this city. So I know that part. And if I feel that I want to make a difference, I would need to be in that position in order to do so, give my opinion. And I do that on a subcommittee level. But I know if I haven't interacted with one of you, most, I've actually interacted with most of you, but, and you guys know how I've been active in this community and participated and done everything from planning these events, 100-year or 50-year or, not the 50-year, we, sauerkraut and powwows. So all of those, I've definitely been part of because I care about this town. I want to see it grow. I want to see it prosper and I feel like I can contribute to that and I would love to be part of that.
Thank you. Jeanette, what do you think the city is doing well?
The city's doing well? I feel like this staff is, first of all, you guys have been, well, they're not here most, but they're, there's a good, yeah, a couple, there's a good group of people. I think that they also, I know that they say, oh, we don't live here, but I think they really love the city of Scappus because you can tell by their commitment. I feel like they're very approachable. I think that, first of all, is really key as a member of the community and as a member of a, actual committee member. They make it accessible to call them, talk to them, email them, even when they're not even working. So that's good. You guys, first of all, hired great people. Second, I think that you guys are as well, you guys are very approachable, you guys are committed yourself into this town. I see that they, for example, the 50-year planning, that's a good step. I'm curious to see where it leads. I know I'm part of that committee as well, so I'm very interested to figure out what's going to happen in this town. There's so many great opportunities. There are so many things that, the, there's growth potential, but then there's also how do we manage that growth? Those problems that come. And I know that what you guys are doing well is trying to address them. Well, what we're all doing well is we're trying to address them. I think that the town has great assets. I just, I think we just need... I think that the town has great assets. I just, I think we just need, I get that question. But I think we should, you know, market that. We think we should be doing more marketing with SCAPU. Some of our strengths are. But anyway, it's probably a question that you guys are going to ask later. I hope I answered your questions. I tend to ramble.
Hi, Jeanette.
Hi.
What do you think the city can do better?
Ah, the city can do better. That's a, you know, it's, I would love to see more diversity. I would like to see more outreach to all of the community of SCAPU. I know it's, it takes time. I've seen the difference between when I got here in 2007 and now. But I just think that there should be more of an outreach to other members of, you know, diverse community. So I try to encourage my community to get involved. But I think when, when you, like any kind of business and you're trying, you know, some of you guys are entrepreneurs, right? You guys market to a certain market. In order to market to that particular market, you need to market to them in order to make them feel welcome, right? And so I think that we should be doing that a little bit better.
Thank you. What do you think are the three most important issues facing the city?
Just three?
You can keep going.
So I mean, SCAPU is, is really close to Portland and people are like, oh, my gosh, it'd be a great place. Yes, it's a great place. The growth, right, and how to manage that, the traffic. I, to be honest, luckily I've been, you know, lucky to work from home right now. But I tend to avoid going out around between four or five or four or five-thirty because I know the traffic is crazy. How are we going to manage the, the mass amount to do with the traffic and all that? The housing is an issue, of course. And also just keeping people here, keeping the workforce here. I know that, that's the conversation that we've been having within the committees. So, and Omic is going to help. Then again, can, are we, are we ready for it, right?
Thinking about what you just mentioned in terms of the big important issues that we're facing, what do you think the city should do to address those important issues?
I think we're, we are having those conversations. I think we are addressing. I think these topics that I brought up have been brought up in several committees. I know that it's been surveys that have been going on and, you know, housing and debt and what's amount of housing to, to an area. I just think that we should, you know, really look at the, the big picture. I think that's what the 50-year plan is, correct? And so I know the 50 years seems a lot. I think should be focusing more on 20 versus 50.
You've heard that.
Yeah, but, but that's, you know, it's just more tangible, I think, than 50. It's just be 50, a lot of things can happen. But I think those are the good steps to that plan. And I think that would answer a lot of those questions. Thank you.
So how do you feel that disagreement and/or debate among city councilors fits the decision-making process?
You guys duke it out, right? No, no. Well, I, you should have discussion. It shouldn't be, I, I hope it's not all of, I don't think you guys are all yes people, right? So I think there should be a healthy debate. And you guys all bring a different perspective as I bring a different perspective. And I hope to bring mine into that conversation. I think people can have discussions and, not necessarily arguments, but in a respectful way. I do that in our work. Why can't we be doing it, you know, council? Right? And we just, the important thing is to be able to, able to listen to each other's arguments and put each, and put ourselves in their perspective. That's a better way for you to understand. You're welcome.
Jeanette, lastly, is there any questions that you would like to ask of council?
Do you guys like the, the five candidates that, that signed up?
Yeah.
Okay, great. We were talking about that, but, so I feel like we're all really committed.
Strong pool. Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sure I'm with my fellow, and it's that we all love SCAPU and, and we're looking forward to serving, whether it be in council or any other way. We're all really, we're still, we're all active members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. For council, there has to be four votes for candidate. So you have more ballots just in case we don't get there because five candidates, I don't know
Oh goodness.
if we're going to get there on the first ballot. But so, mark the ballots, hand them to me, then I'll read them off. It's not a, it's not a secret ballot. I'll announce the counselor who they voted.
Do we have a security detail?
Okay, we got it.
He's only a public safety director.
I got the button here. Yo, I got the button. I've got the button.
Is there a panic button around here?
Yeah, there is. Is it wireless so we can take it in the parking lot?
I think the battery's dead.
I'm a pretty good runner. I don't know. I'm not a bad runner. Oh, gosh.
Is there more notes being handed in to you as well?
Do you want us to put our name on this, Scott?
Well, your name's on there.
It's at the top.
Oh, sorry. It's at the top.
That being said, you guys are a very impressive group of people, and we really appreciate your interest.
I would like to say, I mean, we could have had one person willing to fill out an application and come in front of us. But I think that it, it says a lot about our community and the people that live here and the pride that we have for our town. And this is, like I said, this was a very strong pool of candidates.
We'll do the votes at the live show quick. Sorry. Since most of you are already involved in committees and I know that there's a few of you that have held off on other appointments, should you not get appointed, if you've applied for a committee, I know that Monica's wanting to be on the planning commission. That's going to be my recommendation. If you're not, I haven't looked at the votes yet, so I don't know. I just, yours is the one that connected quickly on that. So why don't we read it? Okay, Council Lasowski votes for Jeanette Santiago. Uh, Council McHugh, Jeanette Santiago. Council Pauling, Jeanette Santiago. Council President Grayson, Jeanette Santiago. Uh, Council Miller, Jeanette Santiago. And myself, Jeanette Santiago. Congratulations. Don't act like you're going to go away because we're going to square you in right now and put you right there. But I got plans.
Do you have them all printed?
And there's going to be another planning commission opening too, so. And I know, Marissa, you're on the planning commission, right? You know, are you interested in planning commission? I'm recruiting. You know, I'm recruiting. Kimberly, I'm recruiting. Yeah. You love Parks Direct.
Hi, Jeanette Santiago. You hereby saw me swear that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully discharge the duties, city councillor, which I have been appointed to by the SCAPU City Council. I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the laws of the State of Oregon, Charter Municipal Code of the City of SCAPU to help me guide.
All right. Onto the next item of the agenda, consent agenda. April 4th, 2022, council meeting work session minutes on April 4th, 2022, city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Hearing a motion by Council Pauling, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With Mr. Haugen leaving, looks like he's leaving again. We need to look for a Parks Committee liaison as a vacant spot. So I don't know if there, if anyone wanted to juggle around or if you're interested in working on parks, Jeanette, or?
I'll do it.
All right. And we'll be adding Jeanette as the Parks Committee liaison.
We'll see you there.
So I don't think we need to vote on that. All right. Next item.
I have a question. Um, Council Lasowski, how is it sitting with the Historical Society? Do they meet or what does that look like?
Pretty quiet at the moment.
Okay.
And it's been quiet.
Okay.
Have not received any confirmation on when doors would be opening back in.
Oh, okay.
So I will keep you posted on what I do hear back.
All right. City of SCAPU's National Volunteer Week proclamation. Whereas National Volunteer Week has been observed annually since 1974 at all governmental levels and recognizes volunteerism, participation, sharing, working together to make a difference. And whereas the city of SCAPU depends on volunteers for many programs that are a service and benefit to the community. And whereas there's a need for more volunteer entity service to help continue these programs. And where serving as a volunteer is a rewarding experience. Now therefore being resolved, I, Scott, urge Mayor of the City of SCAPU, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the week of April 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as National Volunteer Week to honor and recognize the individuals who have made a difference in our communities. Witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the sale of the City of SCAPU to be affixed and at City Hall in the City of SCAPU, Oregon on the 18th day of April 2022. Next item, police vehicles. Purchase, police vehicle purchase.
Well, first, I actually want to start by introducing Brian Jensen. He's our interim safety director, and I realize that this is the first meeting he's been to. So I wanted to aim to face. I'll have him weigh in on this in a moment, but I just, I'll do a brief recap. So at the last meeting, we discussed the city's $1.6 million of ARPA funding. There was a request from staff to purchase some police vehicles. At that particular meeting, the preference stated by council and members of the budget committee that were present was that the cars, one would be purchased with city dollars, you know, already in the budget, and that the other then could potentially be purchased with ARPA dollars. There was a decision made to move forward with reserving those vehicles, just simply because of the long lead time. And we then spoke to the dealership in Gresham. And they actually, just as it so happened, had two vehicles on the lot, which is pretty rare right now to be able to find anything on the lot available to buy. So I was able to find some funds. I did go ahead and purchase one vehicle. And because I did that, they said that they would hold the other vehicle for us for two weeks until I could come before you and then ask or request the ARPA funds for that second vehicle. So we're here this evening to request the funds for that one vehicle. And then we have, as stated obviously, Brian Jensen here to answer any questions and specifics you have about the cars in general.
Assume the interceptor is suit rated.
Get this close. Yes, this is the police interceptor. So it's got all the bells and whistles as far as cops need. And here, and here's the issue. The, the fleet at the, the police department right now is, is hemorrhaging money. They bought a bunch of vehicles all at once, which is a poor decision. And because of that, now they're all dying at once. So we need to really get into a rotational thing just to keep the, the fleet healthy. And that's, that's starting with the vehicle that we just purchased. So the cars that we currently have, we're down, I think it's three. And we're just putting money into them left and right just to keep them functioning. So this is an opportunity to give this specific vehicle is, is something that we, we almost have to do as, as a city to get where we want to be here in, here. So as far as Dodge goes, there's just absolutely no cars, police. Ford is the same way. The, the wait time is about 18 months before we'd have a vehicle here in SCAPU. These two kind of came up, it's kind of out of the blue. And we were fortunate enough that we got one and Gresham Ford said they'd hold the other until tomorrow, until they hear from us. So I, I think it's important that we jump on these vehicles. If I can answer anything. Might not be the right answer, but I can, I can give you something.
Council Miller.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just another consideration too is that the city will also have to get in line for a build. And years ago, builds were weeks out, if not months out too. And I can imagine that it's even worse now too. So not only is there the vehicle purchase part of it, but there's also the build time too, which will probably be several months as well.
If we were to get a new vehicle.
Right.
This one, yeah.
That's what, Brian, that's, that's what this is though, right? Or am I misunderstanding? Is this for a new vehicle?
This vehicle is ready to go, other than we're going to have to get it and get our police stuff on it.
Right. And that's what I'm referring to. So I'm referring to the lights and everything.
The outfitting.
Yes.
The outfitting, sorry.
Separate, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
I thought you meant the actual build for the vehicle. Vehicle's ready to go. We, we need to get it, then work with, I believe it's Wireworks is who we're working with to outfit it with all the
The package.
Lights and the graphics and all of that stuff.
Yeah, sorry. I shouldn't use the term build. I should have said outfitting. Thanks.
Is this a new vehicle, used vehicle? When is, is, I'm just curious. I didn't.
Brand spanking new, 2022.
So the other day I was coming down with my son and there was a vehicle that stopped. It was a regular four doors type of aged car that had was, there's how, I mean, is that, okay, is that a SCAPU's vehicle? And so would it be that type of vehicle? Or is it the big SUVs type of?
This is a Ford Explorer. And it is black. And then I'm assuming when the new chief comes in, if he wants to, you know, brand it his, his way, he'll do that.
These are not undercover.
These are not undercover cars.
I was just curious about that car too.
I think the state police or the state police have some.
They have a Ford, Ford Fusion.
Mr., what's, what's kind of the game plan going forward for replenishing stock over time?
The plan was to do about a vehicle a year, essentially. So, you know, right now, we'd get a little bit of a jump since we have a couple down. We'd get the two. And then from there, again, just one, essentially, budget one a year.
What's our total fleet?
Give me a second.
In working condition.
Exactly.
Oh, in working condition three, no. Want to say that, I want to say there's probably. I'm so, there's the pickup, there's a chief's car, there's lieutenant's car, the SRO car. Believe there's. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have that answer for you.
Sure, no, that's fine, I, I would just recommend to, uh, city manager Alex that as we think about the life expectancy of a single vehicle. We know that, say, if we have seven patrol vehicles that we're looking to replace. You know, are we in line that every year as we purchase one vehicle, that year eight comes back around that we would be expecting to replace? One of the, I guess, one of the two that we're currently buying if we're going to have it through this, um, I guess, the circulatory system of replenishment.
Um, so all of those fourteen's don't need to be replaced right this moment, but we do have a few obviously that do. Um, and then we'll try to do our best to make sure, yeah, that we're hitting those timelines effectively. Um, I think one of the things that we'll see change is that, um, we had some former, a former employee in particular who did a lot of that maintenance himself. And so just the cost of that maintenance and some things will be a little different moving forward, um, since it's no longer with the department, but, um. Well, you know, we'll adjust and we'll budget accordingly and, and make sure that we keep it up.
And it is the intention that these two new vehicles will be for patrol unit or patrol officers.
Correct, yeah, so the, the chief's, uh, car was actually just replaced, um, recently and also the lieutenant's car is relatively new as well. So those are two of the newer vehicles, so these would be for patrol.
Thank you.
Looks like we have ten.
Or the PD.
Or the PD.
That's. Yeah, but there's a variety of different uses of those vehicles, so if we're looking at all patrol vehicles going to a Ford Explorer model. SUV model moving forward, thinking about how that would be a cost difference and so. We look at the patrol unit or the lieutenant or the chief's vehicle, would those be a duplicate of what our. Patrol vehicle style or, uh, model is, or would they have a different? Model that we would be purchasing at that point in time, I know that these probably can't be answered now and I would expect that the incoming chief would be. Uh, asked to come up with that, uh, plan, um, but these are just things that I think that we as a city to address this need moving forward. Need to acknowledge and take on as a, uh, opportunity for better, I guess, efficiency within our, our tax dollars utilized for this equipment.
Yeah, I, I would agree, I think that's definitely a question I'd want to direct to the new chief just because he might have personal preferences on what vehicles, um, you know, work best in his opinion. Um, what I've found too is that sometimes, you know, because we are running into supply chain issues, um, you know, sometimes certain years and certain cars have more issues unfortunately. So I think that over time, there might be some evolution there in terms of what he thinks is best, but I definitely would want to see how he would like to move forward with replacing those. And I think for, uh, Sean Davis, I think part of his recommendation was based on the fact that he felt that the maintenance costs on these were lower. And also that because these vehicles being SUVs are higher off the ground, that it was just more comfortable also. Just, um, considering, uh, the officers getting in and out when they have, you know, vests on and other gear, that it would just simply be more comfortable for them, so I think that was also a big consideration too.
Got one other question. Uh, did we utilize the state of Oregon's Department of Administrative Services, uh, to get a, uh, state, state pricing for the vehicles?
Yes, we did, so, um. The, I believe the lowest price with absolutely just stripped down bare bones is right around thirty one thousand, these actually came already outfitted, it was certain things we needed, so they were more than that, but it was. All things that we, you know, were necessary and would have added anyway, and yes, we did get the, the state contract pricing.
Thank you again.
Sure, uh, just one question, do we happen to know on the patrol vehicle side what the average number of miles are annually, is there any sort of average for that?
I don't know what ours.
Okay.
Ours are, I know that they seem to be running, uh, in idle excessively. And, uh, that's being addressed, but as far as mileage, I, I can't imagine it would be too much.
I don't know that.
Good, thank you.
To the council, have you guys have seen a list of the cars and the mileage and the, all that? Has that ever been presented?
Thought it was, I, I used to think that we saw it in the budget.
I was gonna say, I feel like I've seen it in the budget before, but.
I don't remember specifically seeing that in the budget, I mean, I do obviously recall whenever there's been purchases, they've been in the budget. Um, I don't remember actually listing the mileage or years of the vehicles in the budget itself.
Just, just for clarification though, the reason we're replacing these two particular cars is because of the maintenance costs that they're starting to accrue, right, okay, thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Did what?
We, we can get it.
Okay, yeah, that would be, that would be helpful. And, um, and the reason why I brought up that question was like, are we, are we really need the cars that people are using, like their own personal cars? That's what my thought, I'm like, that officer using his own car or, and, and I'm just thinking as a woman, uh, I wouldn't stop by, I wouldn't stop. That, I'm also thinking that not having those typical police cars patrol is, it's, um, it's also a safety thing.
Like when you saw that under.
Right.
One that would.
If I was a little darker and it was by myself, I would not stop, it was just very suspicious for me and I think if, if you're gonna have police cars patrol, it should look like. I'm just like.
Right, so we, so we would never have our officers use their personal vehicles, um, to patrol in, uh, these would be marked, they're not going to be unmarked. Um, the silver vehicle, I, I believe you might be referring to, um, it does have lights and other indicators that do come on, um, when they do pull someone over, so. Um, and they would actually still be wearing a uniform, um, so they would identify themselves as police officers, um, if this is the vehicle you're referring to. Um, but no, they would never use their personal vehicle.
Saying that it, I would in this.
If you want to authorize two more vehicles, I'd happily park that one.
That's how we need, we are, right?
Yeah, there's definitely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we wish.
Got it, yeah. It's a miracle.
Mister, Mister Mayor. Um, I, I think this, I think, uh, this is a great use for our, our funds, I mean, I think that just being, um, you know, smart with our money and the city's money. Um, obviously moving forward and not putting more, any more burden on the taxpayers, we have these funds available, so.
And I think more importantly is this is a opportunity we didn't expect, obviously so quickly, our expectation was. Twelve months out still, that we'd be getting something in the supply chain, you know, on the. Yeah, so it's. Sometimes you have to jump on an opportunity and I think this is what this is.
Mister Mayor.
Councillor Polling.
I move council appropriate sixty thousand dollars from the city's ARPA allocation to purchase one police patrol vehicle and pay for the outfitting services.
Hearing a motion by councillor Polling, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second by councillor Santiago, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, calendar, our next city council meeting is May second. With the urban renewal meeting at six PM, city council meeting. Follow, seven PM. Our next plan, uh, planning commission in May is on the twelfth and twenty sixth at seven o'clock. We have a city council meeting on the sixteenth, work session six PM, city council at seven PM. Seventeenth, we have a fifty year stakeholder advisory committee meeting, six o'clock. Nineteenth, we have EDC at noon and Parks and Rec at six PM. Then the budget committee starts meeting on May twenty third at five thirty PM. And a scheduled meeting on the twenty fourth, also at five thirty.
And just to clarify for new councillors, you're on the budget committee, so you show up.
Still. She's looking at, let me make your chair. Alex, you have your thing?
Nothing this evening.
Um. Police Department, uh.
Name's Brian.
I czar of all police activity within the Scapuus, I don't know what your official title is.
I'll take that one. No, I have, I have not, just hats off to all the candidates who came and say that was super impressive and I was very, very nervous watching all of you. I was glad I didn't have to interview in front of this group. But, uh, yeah, other than that, nothing, I, I appreciate the opportunity that, uh, I have to be here and serve this city that I'm actually kind of really grown, groomed kind of fond of, it's. Kind of a neat, it's kind of a neat little city, so you guys are all doing a really good job out here.
Mister Miller. Um, update on the, uh, senior center effort, so, um. City manager Rains and I met with, um, uh, Kay and, uh, also councillor McHugh. And, uh, we talked a little bit about what their needs were and, uh, it's, uh, quite a list, um, but what we were able to immediately identify is to be able to help them. With, uh, twelve HP laptops, um, that I think ten are still actually in the box sealed and have never been taken out. And, uh, so, um, alternative, uh, systems, I can never remember the name for whatever reason. Uh, system alternatives based in Scapuus, um, is going to actually do that work, has committed to do that work for the senior center for, uh, free as well, so they're gonna set the computers up, put the necessary software on there. Um, uh, antivirus software, Microsoft Office, pretty, uh, pretty basic stuff that they need. Um, and then also we took a tour of the, uh, senior center's kitchen, however, um, they're not able to open the kitchen up yet, they're still waiting for the clearance from the state, so. Um, what we decided to do with that was wait until we find out what the actual date is that they can open the kitchen. And then plan the, uh, the cleaning, the very thorough deep cleaning, um, a couple of weeks before they can actually open, that seemed to make the most sense and there's a group of. Uh, very dedicated enthusiastic citizens, uh, that have, um, Megan knows who some of them are, um, who have, uh, uh, offered to help with that as well and there's a, uh. There's a lot of them, there's probably over a dozen, so it's really impressive to get that sort of response, so. Um, so for right now, just to recap and summary, we have the computer issue that should be resolved and then also the kitchen cleaning and, um. I know that we're working on some other things too, but that's, that's what we have to report so far is, as, uh, we'll call it wins. So I have, thank you.
I just wanted to, uh, repeat my sentiment earlier with everybody that applied for, uh, the council position, um, you know, this is the most amount of people that we've had apply in quite a long period of time. Um, just means that people are interested in the, in what's going on and, 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 uh, they want to be involved and we really, really, really appreciate that. Um, you know, I just, uh, Wednesday just had my fourth child, uh, my son was born, um, on Wednesday and so, um, I'm, I'm really excited about just being part of Scapuus all the time. Um, I enjoy growing up here and living here, so, um, I just want to kind of reach out with that sentiment, so, thank you.
He's super cute. Fishy. Um. I'm just grateful that all of you are already involved in other things, so we're not like, not losing you in all the other things that you're already committed to, so thank you for staying committed to the city, we appreciate it. Welcome to councillor Santiago, uh, to the team, I think, uh, we have a lot to learn from each other, so we can only do better and be better. Together and I'm excited for that. For sweet and to the point, there we go, bye.
Follow up that, yes, councillor Santiago, I'm extremely excited to work with you and I appreciate your dedication. Um, and to all of the other applicants and your service to our community, I greatly appreciate that what, as well. Um, I, it has been a great stellar group of applicants that we had to choose from this evening, uh, and I think that shows, it reflects our community. Um, so it's a good, good issue to have. Um. Annual town hall have coming up, so very excited to, uh, be able to present that in person for the first time in two years. So that'll be, uh, an exciting opportunity at the, uh, high school auditorium. Birthday as well, there is a celebration and events that are taking place across the community, Parks and Rec and some other community partners are supporting. Uh, events, so I'll be looking forward to, uh, that taking place as well. Um. We continue to move forward here in Scapuus and I, it's one of the things that I'm extremely proud of, um, and I, I continue to look forward to see where. You know, here we are in twenty twenty two, but as we move forward and what the future entails, so with the work of this council and most importantly, our volunteers and community, uh, our citizens. Uh, I'm really excited for all of that and with that I say thank you.
First of all, I thank all the candidates, you guys are amazing, uh, fortunate to have people like those you guys have and, uh. Special congratulations to councillor Santiago for selected, anyway, it's, guys, uh. I, I, hardest thing to do is to select between people who are so highly qualified, appreciate your interest in the city and all you have done and all you will do in the future. So, uh, either, thanks for all your work in the senior center, uh, appreciate it and it's, it's been going well and I think we're giving some help to a. Organization that really needs a little bit of a break right now and so. Either's effort there has been contributing that in a special way. So congratulations to councillor Polling, uh, just think that, uh, overall, I think. Good about things that are happening in the city, I appreciate everybody's involvement, I appreciate our staff. Good work, thank you.
Councillor Santiago.
I just want to say thank you all, uh, it was a hard choice, just getting to know them shortly and some of them in the room, it's, uh, you did have a. Typical decision and I thank you for taking this position, um, moving for me, but I will do. Prove you all right, uh, hopefully, and, uh, I'm excited about taking this position and, um, I know that I'm gonna see. Guys. Would I still be able to participate in the fifty?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, because of the.
Yeah, okay, perfect, just wondering, um, and thank you guys, thank you staff.
Welcome. Board, uh, councillor. In time I've been on the council, this was probably the most qualified group of people, I think I've ever had the opportunity to interview. Uh, I don't remember a time having five outstanding candidates. And. It's, it's, it brings joy to my heart that there's. These kind of outstanding people that are wanting to volunteer and help the community grow and move in the right direction, so. It, it makes me excited and happy for the process, so thank you for applying, thank you for interviewing. And, you know, we're still wanting your voices and we're still wanting you to volunteer, we love y'all.
Volunteer appreciation week.
Volunteer appreciation week, I'm destroying my appreciation. Um, just so everyone knows, uh, PCC's OMC Training Center ribbon cutting celebration is May eleventh. At nine thirty. They do require RSVP, but I don't know. Uh. City could probably get that out or I could get it out, I've got it. Uh, it goes on to the thing of, you know, Omic, where's it going, it's growing, it's growing fast too, so. We're not ready for it, it's gonna just be there because I already know that. Oregon Tech, which owns Omic R and D. Structure. Property there. Are already breaking ground on building two. Additives manufacturing, which is 3D printing of high tech metals, I got a chance to see that in Sheffield, England when we first went out to. See what we are trying to bring over here and it phenomenal, they're already planning their third building on that property, so they are growing, that organization is taking off. UCC's starting up, getting their training, so. When this opportunity came, I really, that question, what is Scapuus about has always been on the mind and that's one of the answers, what are we, we're gonna be the future. Manufacturing and training for the future of manufacturing and that's a pretty cool thing to be a part of. So that's something to be really excited about, what's going on out there and anyone that wants to go, if you can't find an RSVP, I'll. Talk to Andrew and see if anyone wants to go that's from the city, this is a great opportunity to here, get tours, see what's going on. And, uh, celebrate that success of landing that PCC campus here in Scapuus. And, you know, there's a lot of people to think. That's either Mike, C Johnson, Mike Sykes. And the whole team that works to bring them here and put in the county, but, so. I always remember, there, there was some question as to what was some issues clearing up and Mike Sykes went down to their PCC board meeting. They, they were gonna vote on it, they took it off and put it on the agenda just for us so that we could speak to it. And to push that through, so pretty exciting to see that going on.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Time is it? Nine thirty you said, nine thirty eight?
It's nine thirty, yeah. May eleventh, so really excited about that, real excited about the future, this was announced, I think it was announced at the last meeting, we. Do now have more park property, Cat Head Park site is now officially in the city, just looks like a cat head that's upside down. It's now an officially city property, so it's pretty exciting that. I started, had Heritage Park, but bad grass. Escape Park had just been finished with unfortunately bad cement, because it got stuck at the weigh station and ride improperly. That's been rebuilt, that's been rebuilt, parks are expanding, and now we've got Cat Head Site, Chapman Landing, Crabhorn, Vista Park, all waiting to be developed. I mean, this is a great problem to have, a lot of times people that don't have parks are looking for land to have, they start to have the property. So I'm really excited about the future of what the Parks and Recreation, that he's gonna look at over the next several years, and build that parks, and we do need to add the recreation side. And I'll always go back, having grown up here, I think anyone that grew up here, when, it was back to the days when the school board would say that they're the Scapoose Parks District, because that was the only playground equipment in town. To city having a parks system is just really great to see, so. Excited about the future, and hopefully it'll warm up, because, you know, again, supply chain issues. We had February snow last week, everything's delayed, so.
Totally. Vapor, wasn't it?
Well, but it was February. It was delayed because of supply chain. Couldn't get the snow here on time, anyways, everyone have a wonderful night. Being adjourned.